We have negotiated and the unions that have collective bargaining agreements that have specific apprentice to journeyman ratios. This is another concession they've made is in order to increase the amount of opportunities for new people coming into the trades, they've agreed to a 30% of the crew makeup of apprentices. Where typically it's 20%. So we've increased the utilization of apprentices by 10% by concessions by the unions and the contractors and other national labor agreements. Part of the reason when we look at if we're going to have a successful partnership, in order to be successful, you would probably be most likely to get the greatest benefit by going to programs with a program that has a more proven track record. So I want to read off, this is a fax about apprenticeship programs in California, December 17th, California Department of Industrial Relations. I'll make this quick. Ninety-two percent of all construction apprentices are enrolled in union programs. Ninety-five percent of apprenticeship graduates are produced by union programs. Sixty-eight percent of participants in union programs are people of color. Ninety-six percent of all women in state-approved apprenticeship training programs are in union programs. So we make no apologies for having the best programs and the largest programs and the most diverse programs. And I think that's probably a good reason to sort of go with those partnerships.
Thank you. The last issue, which is really question and sort of a real concern of mine, you know, just you and we have talked about this as a partnership and going into a partnership. So, you know, no out, you know, for five years if the city finds it's not working because it's a partnership and we're all, you're investing and I understand that. But I have a hard time with a partnership where you want to retain the right to sue the city for monetary damages. It's fine for injunctive and declaratory relief, but that really doesn't feel fair to the city or our taxpayers. And that one I really don't quite understand. So I'd like to hear why you think you need to have that, given we're doing a partnership where we're committing to a lot here and giving, going to court for, it's not going to be needed hopefully, but going to court for relief, but asking for monetary damages, I feel is a real concern of mine. There may be a lawyer in me, but.
No, no, I understand it. And we really, we really consider this deeply and thought long and hard about how do we mitigate any differences between the city and the billing trades or the contractor, between parties, where the city doesn't clearly follow under the grievance procedures that could ultimately be resolved in arbitration, which then would be a very cost-effective way of dispute resolution for any of these types of claims. The reason we just, the reason I got from the attorney, our legal counsel, that recommended that we don't accept a broad non, no monetary damages clause is this, even if we did get injunctive relief, even if we did go to court and get a decision, we would also be barred from even trying to get our attorney fees back. This puts us as trustees of our local unions and of the billing trades in the same position the city is in, is that we could suffer monetary damages because we wouldn't even have the ability to enforce an agreement through the courts. So that's one of the reasons that was given to me by legal counsel.
So would you be open then to an attorney fees provision for whoever prevails? So if it is something blatant like what you're talking about, there would be attorney fees. I mean, I just, I don't want to deal breakers on this by any means, but I'm very supportive of 98% of this. I want to hear from the rest of the council because there are a couple of things as I raise that I am concerned about already, but this one really just, it feels like we're going into it with the wrong attitude when we have that. And I appreciate your attorneys want to do everything to help you and our attorney wants to do everything to help us, but that's not a partnership where we're, we're going to sue each other for monetary damages if someone makes a mistake or doesn't follow it. So I'm okay with attorney fees for whoever the prevailing party is because that means someone really messed up. But to have monetary damages for our city and our taxpayers doesn't really feel right to me on this agreement, given the other things we're doing.
Keep in mind, that clause didn't cover monetary damages that the council may suffer by lawsuit. So it, I think, Jeff, we can probably take another bite at this apple. Because, you know, this entire predicate of this agreement is peaceful resolution of disputes. This would be yet another dispute. So all the parties, except for the city, that have disputes under the terms and conditions of this agreement, have a very specific way of resolving those disputes, whether it's jurisdictional disputes, anything else, grievances. And those are all cost-effective remedies because they're just to be settled through specific steps and ultimately be settled at arbitration. If there's a way we can seek and agree to some form of that dispute resolution, I think we would be all for it. I think what sort of scared off Labor and our legal counsel was just a blanket, no monetary dam. So if, and I did, I did talk to our attorney for about an hour this morning and mentioned that this was, we understand the importance of this issue. There may be a possibility that we can find a better way of, you know, getting to agreement on that piece of it.
Okay. Maybe the city attorney just let other council members comment, but if you think of some options that might, you know, work and then maybe we'll call you up after we're done with this piece. So thank you very much. I appreciate the responses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors, Mayor Porton Middleton.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank all of my colleagues for their questions. You've not left a whole lot left. If I could, and I don't want to lose Mr. Elrod or Mr. Perez, but maybe give them a moment's rest, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask staff before coming back Is the city attorney?
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
There we go. Thank you. I want to focus on this issue of an opportunity to rebid a project for a moment. The city takes and makes determinations after receiving bids that the bids that they've received are not responsive and makes a determination that we need to rebid a project. Is there anything in this agreement that would alter or change the city's independent ability to come to a conclusion that the bids that we've received are non-responsive?
No, there is not. And in fact, what I think Mr. Perez mentioned earlier was the city would still have the right to rebid projects, not only on the basis of non responsiveness, but if the bid prices came in at a level that the city council didn't, didn't want to see going forward. So the city would retain that discretion.
All right. So is this in some respects, to use that phrase that I hear lawyers using all the time, both the belt and suspenders, that in fact, we already have that ability to make a determination that we're going to rebid?
It is extra protection, yes.
And then to go to, and I want to leave that last question of protecting the city from monetary damages. But with the other four issues that are there, are those, in your mind, issues where as, as our city attorney, you feel strongly that this is something that we should do, or are these policy decisions that you were putting in front of city council for us to debate because there was a lack of clarity from council on these issues previous to the, the assignment you received to, to work with the trades in negotiations?
Thank you for that question, Mayor Porton Middleton. I would say the, that last issue, the sixth issue about monetary damages is certainly a legal issue that I feel strongly about, and I was pleased to hear that there might be some, some movement on that towards maybe a compromised position. I also think that from a risk standpoint, the second bullet point of either allowing the city to terminate without cause or maybe having a shorter time period is, should be important to the city. The other issues, especially the amount in lieu of benefits, that's fundamentally a policy question in my mind, as well as the, the exemption of the applicability of the community workforce agreements to the local contractors.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank you for, for making so very clear and clean each one of these issues. It certainly helped me as I was evaluating it. So my compliments to you on all of the issues that you've raised. I now like to turn to asking Mr. Elrod and Mr. Perez a few questions. So, and I'm going to second, I'm going to start with a comment. I think Councilmember Coors really raises a very good question when it comes to protecting the city for monetary damages. And I appreciate that we may have an opportunity to revisit this issue and encourage the parties to, to try to find a compromise on this that works to, to protect everyone from further The, the issue on local contractors is, I understand it, and I think you've said this, anyone can bid, anyone can be a part of it, they simply have to agree to the provisions of the agreement.
Correct.
And I see, so, so our local contractors are not barred from this. They have every opportunity to, to participate. The second issue that Mr. Ballinger raises regarding the length of the term, what's been the typical lengths for first CWAs that you've entered into?
Five years.
Are there any that have been shorter than that?
Not in my experience, not any that I'm aware of, yeah. In fact, we now have agreements that are being proposed, actually being signed, at a five-year with an automatic additional five-year rollover unless the parties reopen. So a 10-year agreement would be out of hand. I don't know if anybody would even consider that, but in order to, to sort of ramp things up, start to generate and be able to see some of the benefits that we're hoping to see here, five years is a reasonable amount of time and that's, that's standard.
What's the oldest CWA that you have right now?
The oldest CWA, it would be San Bernardino Community College District, and they're on their second five-year agreement.
Second five years.
So we were in negotiation after their first five-year term and successfully came to a new agreement a year ago in November.
Has anyone tried to pull out of one after negotiating?
No. No, we've never, never had that situation. You know, going back to Article 20 in the agreement, you know, these, these agreements are put together by good faith negotiations and we've never had anybody just interlaterally decide to just close the door and walk away from this thing. You know, we, we sort of, Article 20 allows the parties to meet and confer and renegotiate should, should we find problems with the agreement or we find problems with the application of the agreement. We always have that option, you know. I feel strongly that negotiations got here and if necessary, negotiations will continue. And keep in mind, we have a very strong labor management component in here and dispute resolution processes. So there are a number of ways that we can work in concert to address any issues that should come up. It's not like, you know, divorce where I pack my bags and just leave. So that, I hope that answers that question.
It does. I want to ask a couple of questions that are a little broader to the construction trades and to labor law. There was a reference to wage and workers' compensation fraud. Can you tell us how big of an issue wage theft, payments under the table that are off the books and workers' compensation fraud have been in the construction trades, particularly over the last two, three decades?
If I may, yeah, nationwide, the latest report, it equates to $8.4 billion within the construction industry. Actually, you know, tax day is coming up, the carpenters take a stance on this and we fight very hard to bring awareness to it. And every year we do tax fraud awareness.
Right. In, in the, that wage fraud, workers' compensation fraud, how many of those have been union shops?
I can't get away with it.
How many have been non-union shops?
Well, I think it's safe to say.
Sorry, Jimmy.
I think it's safe. Well, and then, you know, I keep citing that RCCB analysis that was performed and if I can find my notes, just within that college district, they had, over the course of the five-year agreement, 842 contractor discrepancy notices issued, 70 contractor prevailing wage violations identified, investigated and resolved, which equated to $116,934.30, to be precise and exact, of worker wages recovered for the workers that otherwise really would have been shorted, right? And, and to be honest, this is a means to which shady contractors that are very abundant within the construction industry undercut responsible contractors that are looking to do things right and they don't look to profit off the back of the workers.
Okay. Now, I could, I could go on and on in this vein, but it's, it's, it's getting a little bit late. But we do have some strong labor laws in California and across the country. I am not aware of any labor law protecting employees that was passed because employers came forward in opposition to the labor unions to push for employee rights and for employee benefits. They happen because labor unions stand up for working class people. And this is a notatorial comment, for the last four decades, the employer community has had an all-out war on represented labor and labor unions. The result of that has not been increased economic security for working people, it has been the opposite.
Look at the, the wage inequality rate and the race to the bottom and the poor keep getting poorer, the rich get richer, and the middle class is a dying class. It's sad to see and in large part, yeah, it originates back from probably safe to say the, the early eighties, late seventies with this concerted effort to undermine organized labor.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be very, very fast with this. First of all, I have to agree with Councilmember Gardner on page 10, under employment of city residents. I would really like to see, as Jimmy Elrod had said, reaching out to those residents, what that looks like and making sure that there's a proactive approach to our local residents. I think that's going to be very important to it. I agree with our mayor on the fundamentals of why we would want such agreement in place. And Jimmy, it's good to see you again, and I would agree, you know, that it is probably a very good thing for our workers and our workforce. I do have a question for the city attorney on page 33 of the agreement under Article 22, which is the waiver of right to monetary damages. I'm just not clear where we're at with that. Is that being accepted as part of this agreement or, or not?
So the language that you see underlined on page, starting on page 33 and continuing on to page 34 is language that I proposed that the Trades Council had indicated previously that their attorney was not in agreement with. And I think as a result of some earlier discussion between Councilmember Coors and Mr. Perez, sounds like there may be some movement on, on the part of the Trades Council on that issue.
That would please me if that was the case. And it would sway me much more to vote for something like this than to not vote for it.
So can I just jump in on this? Sorry.
Thank you.
So, you know, one of the things you mentioned was a concern, Mr. Perez, was you won't even get attorney fees. So maybe a reasonable path forward, although I prefer neither of us gets to each other for monetary damages, but if that's, is that we have, you know, injunctive and declaratory relief both ways, but the prevailing party gets their attorney fees. I think that takes, covers the real concern, and I know we might have to do this conditional, as you said you did, I think with Coachella Valley Unified, but I think something like that seems fair and seems more like a partnership, right? Because you're only going to do that knowing attorney fees, you know, you'll only, you'll win your attorney fees back if there's a real, someone does something deliberately. And of course, none of us believe that is possible because we're all doing this in partnership, but things happen, we know in the world. So that may be, I just want to suggest that is maybe the best way, what your thought is and what our city attorney thinks on that.
That question to me.
Sure, either of you.
Yes, thank you for that. You know, I think I made it pretty clear is that, you know, we want to make this right. We've taken a lot of time to get it to this point. If it takes a little more time to get it right, I have no problem doing that. My, I guess my, the only drawback personally is I'm one of the few in this Zoom call that's not an attorney. So I keep in mind that I, I do have great respect for the, for the profession and for the advice of the attorneys that we pay good money to, to advise us. And so I want to make sure that, I keep pushing the envelope here and if we can find, and I, and I was encouraged by our attorneys, my attorneys' comment that, you know, there, there's always a possibility of a way that we can come to resolution because he even understood the concern as, as, you know, as city council folks, your trustees are the, are the funds of the city and you have that fiduciary duty as well as the rest of us have within our own unions and our trust fund, so we get all that. So if we can, I'll commit to continue to move ahead if, if city attorney would like to propose something to us, I can run that back past our attorney. We may be looking at putting something new together through our legal counsel. Like I said, where the parties would be treated like all the other parties under this agreement, where there is a binding resolution process. So I think we have a couple of options to explore.
If I can ask the city attorney, in terms of consideration of this tonight, is it possible to do a conditional approval, including some of those terms that council has identified, in particular the attorney fees provision or a similar provision?
I believe so, as long as council can give us some fairly clear direction where the council wants to go on any or all of these items. And I am hopeful that if, if given the opportunity to work with, with their legal counsel, I think we could come up with something that meets the needs of the parties.
Thank you. What level of specificity do we need for direction to do a conditional approval on that issue in particular?
The general parameters, and I think what I've heard is maybe a reciprocal waiver of monetary damages with, but maintaining the right of attorney's fees for this, the prevailing party, just to kind of protect both parties to still be able to go to court if they need to. And then if there are other of these six deal points that the council wants to give direction on, that, sort of that level of detail would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Garner.
I'm still not comfortable moving forward with this. I understand that the subcommittee and Labor have done a lot of work on this, but we're, the rest of us are getting it for the first time, you know, this week. And I know that what was proposed before has changed a lot since, you know, so it's, there's been a lot of movement on this since last year, since we first got to see it. And now we're still here and now there's still a lot of, I mean, I have pages and pages of questions that just came up from the discussion that we're, we're having since I stopped talking. So I'm, I'm just concerned when we're entering into things as a council, but we have some council members who have been able to have a lot more meaty time with it than others. And I know that that's been something that we've all struggled with. Every time we're not on a subcommittee, we're like, wait a minute, what's going on here? And it's still another concern for me. So I, I just feel very unclear about this because I can't in good conscience say, yes, I want to move forward with this when I still have unanswered questions. And, you know, my residents have been talking for a long time about wanting work training and, and the like, but, but, you know, the last time, I'm sorry, the carpenters were in our district was over a year ago and I, and I haven't heard that outreach yet for, for going back into the district to talk about jobs. So these are questions that I still have. I want to know what's going on. I want to know how this directly benefits our residents, how I'm going to get them these jobs and these apprenticeships. Because I also have other, you know, non-union apprenticeships giving me information too. So what is really the best thing for, for our residents? I mean, I, I support the, the, you know, the things that the unions bring, but I just want more details.
I appreciate that and I know it's really difficult when you're not the liaison, when you're seeing an issue, you know, come forward. I know that we continued this item one time before in the last few months so that we would have time for all the council members to do that work. But I hear you, I appreciate that this is a really nuanced conversation for our community and it's, you know, a big conversation to have and it's, it's difficult to do that in council meetings, which is why we've asked to move to more to discussion items that are study sessions for these types of issues that might take more in-depth work. Does council members have other comments or discussion or proposal about how you'd like to move forward? Councilmember Wood.
If we were to give a conditional approval and give some direction, the local contractor, I think that, you know, is an important aspect. Just those parts in the contract that the city attorney, our city attorney highlighted, I think are important as deal points to move forward, if that makes any sense.
Can you explain more about that?
Yeah, just, you know, the city attorney on, on page seven talked about local, he put in local contractor. You know, I think a clause like that is important to have in, in the contract. I think, I think on page 10, trying to get, to take Councilmember Gardner's point of view about outreach and how you're going to actually capture some of those employees in the minority communities and whatnot, or our residents just in general, to get into some of these apprenticeships programs. You know, on page 11, there's several red lines that, that seems to be positive and it gets, you know, it's again, it's how they're reaching out. And then even on page 33, talking about the waiver to monetary damages, which we talked about. I think, and the reason I say that is this is the first step of us trying it. It gets us into the ballgame. It gives us some protections to be in that ballgame. It gives us an opportunity to have our residents actually be part of the game. And so I like the overall concept with the amendments made by our city attorney. But I don't know if the rest of the council is in that same direction.
Mayor Porton Middleton. Mayor Proton Middleton.
Yeah, I always hate to disagree with my colleagues, but an exemption for local contractors is an exemption from this agreement. It's giving the local contractor the ability to participate separate from the agreement, where under the agreement, every local contractor has an opportunity to participate in the agreement, and they have, and their employees have opportunity to participate. I think it's a deal killer. I don't think it's a small issue. I think it's a fundamental policy question regarding the CWA. So, I can't support carving out an exception to the agreement. If this is, this was saying that the local contractor who's not a union shop can't participate, that would be a different kind of question. It's not doing that.
Councilmember Garner, and then my councilmember Coors.
All right. Yeah, I agree with the local aspect. I mean, we want local workers to be required to follow most of this, these things, but one of the questions that I still have relates to the hiring process, because a non-union company then needs to hire five to five, right, for union, non-union, but then after a certain amount, they have to go through the union, even though they might have workers of their own. So, that's one thing that I would like to see is that parity, right? If it's going to be, if you're going to have a non-union worker that's being given this job, they should follow all of those great things that we want, but then they should still be able to one-to-one do the hiring. And that's something that I think is a big, a big part of the concern, is that we're talking about million-dollar-plus projects, so it's not just going to be a few workers, it's going to be several workers, and then they're kind of missing out on getting in their people if after a certain point, they only have to hire a union. So, that's kind of my part of it, is there's little things that kind of take it and put it more in the hands of the union, and at the detriment of the non-union. So, how do we balance those things so that it's equitable for both?
Councilmember Coors.
Yeah, to Councilmember Garner's point, which was one of the things I was going to raise, and I agree with Councilmember Middleton, right? Of course, non-union Palm Springs contractors can bid, but it's, you know, the day, it's the way that has to move forward, where their employees, right, some may not get to work because of the way this works, and it may end up with union members who live in Beaumont above their workers who live in Palm Springs. So, for me, it's really their workers in Palm Springs I'm most concerned about, not an equal amount everywhere. So, it's really limited, but I don't want Palm Springs workers who would otherwise be getting jobs not to get them for people in other cities. So, I, that's, I think, my nuance on that one is, it would be a really minor carve-out, but I'd want to make sure that, you know, it was Palm Springs workers first, that's because that's who we are. And as far as how to move this forward, because we all have had the frustration of not being liaisons, and I know it's frustrating, and, you know, is there a conditional approval where there are things that there are still questions, you know, we bring back, and the council members who have them can reach out to the unions and with the city attorney directly to see if we can get those resolved? Right? We don't need to bring it all back, but I think we should really come to the couple things that people still have concerns or questions on, because it's not fair, you know. One, we don't want to keep this item for an hour, and Councilmember Garner has every right to ask all their questions. So, I think that may be the way forward, is figure out what the areas where there's still questions and concerns, give conditional on the rest of it, and bring those back to see if we can reach agreement. So, that's just an idea as a path forward.
I agree with that proposal. Does that work for council in terms of being able to answer the questions that you still have? So, I'd like to make a motion to approve a community workforce agreement with the following, so we'll have to go item by item, I guess, but with the following changes. Let me see, at least if I can summarize what I heard from council. And first, the city clerk or city attorney, if I can, so the attached community workforce agreement would not be the one that we would be approving conditionally, right? Can you explain exactly what motion you want from us?
Yes. I guess, I guess my question is more fundamental, though. Are we really approving this if there are still terms that aren't, haven't been agreed to by the parties and need to be discussed by? I certainly understand the desire of the council members who weren't liaisons to have an opportunity to digest and weigh in. I'm just trying to think logistically how, how we would, how we would, how we'd incorporate any feedback into, into the final document. I mean, I think, I think I got direction on the, on the limitation of monetary liability and attorney's fees. The other ones that, I don't know what I, I'm not really sure what I would do based on any particular feedback we might receive from the other council members outside of the council meeting process.
Sure. So, I was going to summarize it right now what I heard. So, I was just asking because the document attached is redlined, and so it includes the terms that the Building Trades Representative said were deal killers and wouldn't be able to move forward, so I do want to move forward. So, I don't know if it would be approving the non-redlined version with, you know, the changes that have all, including the changes that have been agreed upon, because I know there were some redlined paragraphs that the union did agree to.
Correct.
And then including, what I heard from council was splitting the zip codes, so a preference for Palm Springs residents, so as a 1A, go to the Palm Springs zip codes, and then the 1B would be for Coachella Valley zip codes. I heard the reciprocal waiver of monetary damages with attorney's fees or a similar provision that the attorneys can agree to. And I heard, I don't know where council is on the last two, but I heard a discussion about quantifying some outreach, and I think, at least Jimmy, the carpenters, talked about, you said that you might be amenable to that. And then I heard Councilmember Garner raise the issue of tracking goals for workers, or at least like tracking progress. And I think that would be on the administrator, right, so we could talk about what that might look like. Does that represent the issues that the council discussed on this?
I think the only other thing was what Councilmember Coors and I raised about local workers, because after a certain number, it has to go all union, which could possibly leave out local workers. So, how does, how do we reconcile that?
So, maybe the question is to Mr. Perez and Mr. Elrod in terms of how to move forward, because I don't want to have us prescribe deal points that then you all can't agree to. So, would you prefer a conditional approval? Maybe you could explain how you did that with Coachella Valley Unified, or if we should bring this back and you all can negotiate before we do that.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think the distinction on the CVUSD example was, that that was a non-substantive issue. That was just adding and changing some zip codes, which was easy, easy in that context. What we're talking about here is we're, now we've gone from a conditional approval, at least in my mind, initially in the discussion was, we had agreed to meet and confer to decide the monetary damages question, and then going to Councilmember Coors' recommendation on modifying, doing the 1A on the zip codes. That would be a conditional approval of something that we've agreed to move ahead on. On one substantive issue, one is not necessarily substantive. It looks as though we're adding more substantive issues. The core employee ratio is one of them, the local contractor exemption is the next one. I don't think we have a, I don't think we have an agreement to even move forward on here, and perhaps we should, we either, we'll have to go back into negotiations and then come back with what we can agree on, because I can tell you, from the, from the Building Trades viewpoint, we're not doing a local hire, a local contractor exemption, we're not changing the core worker ratio. We can move a little bit, we're not going to, oh, let me just go through those five, five points. And tell you where, because keep in mind, I have to get 29 locals to sign this thing, 29 business managers have to do this thing, it's not just Phil Perez's idea.
If I can, Mr. Perez, before you do that, so what I heard you say is that there was agreement on the split zip code issue that would not be substantive for you, that you know that you've done that before, and that the attorney fee issue is also sort of one that can be conditionally agreed upon, and that the others are substantive and you, we couldn't reach an agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, for me personally, in reviewing this, I very much do not want us to, want us to create new precedent and undermine the purpose of the CWA in our community in ways that these have been passed in Paris and Paris, California, and, you know, Moreno Valley, and, you know, all of these different school districts and throughout our region. And so, I think Palm Springs is the leader on this issue, or at least should be, and I very much don't want to see us harm this effort in future cities and in future districts by creating new policies. So, I don't want to see the exemption for local contractors in a way that would undermine the purpose of the agreement. The termination without cause, if it has never been in another CWA, I don't think it should be included in ours. You know, if the city attorney feels so strongly about it, I think we could do a shorter term, but if, you know, no other jurisdiction is doing a shorter term, I don't think that's a good precedent or a good policy decision. And, you know, along with the other issues as well, if that does not exist in any other CWAs, I'm not sure how Palm Springs is so unique that, you know, it would apply here and not elsewhere, and I think it creates a bad precedent and might have a lot of unintended consequences that, that we haven't thought through. So, that's my position. I'm trying to summarize where I heard the council, but I don't know if I hear where the majority is. Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor, and if that, I think that was a motion that you were making on those scores, and I'd be proud to second that motion as you stated it.
Okay, so we can clarify that, but there's, I can take that as a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Coors.
I want to make sure I understand it, because I wasn't thinking there'd be going back and negotiating on those, those other points. I think what I was recommending is, we give, we give some more time, you know, not much, maybe it's the next meeting or two meetings at most, for the council members who were not liaisons to be able to ask the union representatives and talk to the city attorney about their concerns and get those questions answered. And if, you know, there are deal points that can't be agreed to, then, you know, the majority will vote, right? If it's not consensus, that's fine, that happens. And, but I, I don't feel like I want to shut down their ability to have the time to ask those questions. That's my concern here. I think the other point, so, and as I understand the motion, it would be conditional on attorney's fees and number of job fares and those things, which I think we'd want to see anyway, right? And I also would like, ideally, for me at least, to see some, some goals, not requirements, but what are we trying to accomplish as far as the diversity of the workforce, right? And there's sort of goals that we can monitor, right? Requirements of keeping that report in progress. So, we see if we're hitting our goals. If not, why we, why not? Do we need to make changes, you know, together? So, I'd like to see that in here, which I think also is probably not a, you know, one of those big points. On, you know, the local hire, I don't think, for me, it's not the ratios, and I appreciate Councilmember Garner's point, because we don't have that many union workers in any of the trades living in Palm Springs. We have some, but not that many. It's to make sure that the workers in those contractors, if they agree to all the other terms, can be employed and aren't sort of frozen out, just those in Palm Springs. And we're talking about a few number, so that's a little different than changing your whole core number position. And, but I think we, and I think while Councilmember Garner and I may have approached it differently, I think we had the same idea here, which is, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that we want to make sure our Palm Springs workers who are not members of the union don't end up not getting work they other would have gotten, would have received, while workers from other cities get that work. That's my, that's my real key piece. Sorry, Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I also just think that when we're coming at this, each CWA, to me, each CWA is going to be different, because we're all different cities, and our city is very different than Moreno Valley, than Paris. And so, for me, that's what it is. It's like, what is the goal for us as a council in passing this specifically, and then going from there and negotiating that? And for me, this is very much like, I want this to be the best for our residents, for our workers, and just because something is union doesn't necessarily mean that it's the best for workers. If there's a whole bunch of non-union people who are not willing to be union workers in our city that are going to be left out. So, there's just a question there, of how do we make this better? And obviously, there's a whole vast universe of ways that we can make, you know, these jobs better, and we're not even discussing undocumented workers who don't get to take part in any of this. So, there's just a lot here to do and unpack, and I think that scrutiny is important.
Sure, and I don't think anyone's saying that we're not looking out for Palm Springs workers. I think we've worked really hard over a year and a half, and this has come to council before to give direction about what those values are. So, we did give direction as a council that we thought, you know, we should give priority to Palm Springs residents, and we, you know, talked about the different groups of people and workers that we might prioritize in this, and we talked about outreach. And I've had, individually, I know we've had a lot of meetings about, you know, what that outreach should look like and what the apprenticeships programs are, and trying to expand those in Palm Springs. So, I hear you, and I think that's really important, that every, everyone has input in that. My initial motion was to support, to approve a CWA with the changes of the split zip codes and the attorney's fee provision, which is what we heard that we could approve. So, Mayor Proton, after hearing everyone, you know, I know you're the second, and you pushed for that, and I don't know if you have a proposal here.
I concur with you. I think all of us want to make sure that Palm Springs employees are getting employed. And so, one of the things that I think we could do that I don't would, believe would cause any grief, is that we have a very robust tracking system for any employee that is hired under this program, so that we can get good demographic data as to what has been the impact of this, and whether or not it is creating the kind of diverse workforce that we know makes for a better workforce. So, I do see at least one head shaking that we have a, as a part of this agreement, that we will track all employment and identify what city they are in, their ethnicity, their, whether or not a individual is a member of the LGBTQ community, and all of the appropriate methods of looking at ensuring that we have a diverse workforce. And if we're not producing that diverse workforce, then that's going to be something that any council in Palm Springs is going to immediately want to take action with regard.
Councilmember Coors.
I don't know if this would be a friendly amendment or a substitute motion, so you can decide there. So, I would just add to the items you had, both what Mayor Proton Middleton said, you know, tracking progress and establishing goals, I would include. And I would make it, the one issue that I think we just can't make a final decision on, I think we just need... we just can't make a final decision on, I think we just need, um, I would like us to be able to bring back, you know, at the next meeting, the issue of Palm Springs non-union workers, uh, so there's enough time for people to ask, um, both Mr. Elrod and Mr. Perez questions, and, but I think if we limit it to those, those issues, I'm fine with the other ones, I'm fine with, I can accept the five years, I can accept all the other things that were sort of in those deal points, um, but I think there just needs to be a little more time for questions and discussion about the non-union Palm Springs workers, um, who hopefully after working on, under one of these, will join the union, uh, but I, I do think giving time for, especially Councilman Burrows and Garner to be able to talk to both of you, um, and then come back and vote on just those five issues, is, is what I'd like to make a motion that we do.
Okay, so there's an, I'll take that as an alternative motion, not a friendly amendment, uh, is there a second to that, to continue, uh, this item to the next council meeting, um, with those limited issues explored?
I, I could second that, I would just ask, um, on page seven, about the lack of adequate bids, if that is something that's important to us as a council, or not?
I, for me, it's not, um, I think we can rebid if we don't have adequate bids, so it's just we can't rebid, the people can not follow this agreement, which is something, if, if we want, we want, uh, and given every jurisdiction and people I've talked to in other places, they renew these, so they're not finding that to be a problem, so I think that just gives an, I worry about the incentives that may give to some bidders and how that could all work out, so.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
What, what are we voting on?
So there's an, sorry, there's an alternative motion to, um, continue this to the next council meeting, um, just in discussion, I will probably vote no on it, um, but I think that we're ready, I think we might be at a point where we need to make a decision, but I, I appreciate that we want this really to be consensus, and we want everyone to get their questions answered, so, you know, I appreciate that, um, we are coming to a decision soon. Mayor Protem Middleton.
Yeah, I thi, I think we are, we're very, very close, and I'm fearful, uh, if we vote on this, uh, it's, in this fashion right now, what it's gonna do is, uh, throw all of the work that has been done up into, uh, uh, uncertainty, uh, and we, uh, I don't know if there's a way to get, uh, to, uh, resolution of the questions that Councilmember Coors has raised, but, uh, I, I'd like to try to take one more stab at it, we've been at this for two hours, uh, let's, let's not lose this, uh, in the last minute. Uh, you know, the, the question, uh, that I think Councilmember is, is raising is just simply the one that, uh, if, uh, a Palm Springs resident applies for a job and is willing to work under this agreement, that the Palm Springs resident gets the job before the non-Palm Springs resident gets the job, is, is, is that the point you're, you're trying to?
That is the point I'm making.
Okay, this, that's, that's an incredibly narrow, uh, situation, where we're gonna have, uh, the last job available, uh, comes down to two people, and one of them's in Palm Springs and one of them's not, um, and we may go through the whole five years without ever getting to that scenario, but it, it's conceivable, um, is, do you, Mr. Elrod, Mr. Perez, do you think you can live with something where, if we get down to that last job, that it's the Palm Springs person who gets it?
I think, I think then the proposal some time ago should have been, uh, a hundred percent local hire goal, and there are to the two zip codes, um, I've never seen anything like this, so I, I'm gonna have a hard time wrapping my head around this.
That's why I thought if that was our policy concern, the split zip code solved that problem, right, that Palm Springs residents would be called first, before Coachella Valley residents, before the other zip code, so that's why I-
But non-union members as well? Because you'd only have the union members, right, to call?
The way I understood it, uh, is, is as the mayor did, the Palm Springs folks are gonna get called first.
Well, I guess that's my question for Mr. Perez and Elrod, but the, do you have the non-union members' phone numbers to call them, or are those just the union members who'll be called?
Those that would be dispatched, uh, dispatch halls would be those that are registered with the union halls, and the union registration lists are not based on membership as well, they're based on qualifications and residency, so, yeah, well, you know, not all union members are gonna be registered on the out-of-work list, um, they may be traveling, they may not wanna work, they may be working, um, there may be non-union electricians or non-union employees that, um, don't wanna register and go to work through the union hall, so, um, keep in mind that, uh, you know, in order to be efficient and productive and profitable, contractors have to have a workforce, and part of the value of this agreement was that they would have a steady supply of skilled and trained employees, so the more we sort of, I mean, that's, you know, keep in mind how the, the local is, the first request goes to those zip codes, and unions are required to send anybody on that list that makes those zip codes. The next tier, then, they go to the next tier, and they go down their list and see who's in those zip codes, so, uh, even if you put it down to the last unemployed construction worker, or union or non-union in Palm Springs, would have to be hired before anybody else, um, the real world doesn't even work that way, let's just be honest, this is not even reality, so, um, I don't know how to address that.
Right, just to follow up on that, so, so can you explain the process where, so let's just say I was a non-union, which wouldn't happen, but if I was a non-union, um, uh, you know, mem, non mem, so I wasn't a member of the Building Trades, how would I get myself registered on the list to be called? What's the process?
You have to go down to the union hall and, uh, fill out whatever paperwork they require in order to register on the out-of-work list. Now, if, you'd have to, in some cases, you have to show your qualifications, because if a contractor calls in for three journeyman electricians, they're expecting three journey level electricians who are state certified as journeyman electricians, so they would have to show those qualifications, however, it's the exact same qualifications for out-of-work status, or those registration rolls, for every individual to register on that out-of-work list, regardless of union membership, based on qualifications.
What is an out-of-work list?
That's where the dispatches will come from, so unemployed construction workers, the union halls maintain an out-of-work list, when they get laid off, they can go to the union hall, sign your out-of-work list, uh, under federal law, we have nondescript, since we have exclusive referral, uh, allows us, it's nondiscrimin, nondiscriminatory referral procedures, and the only way you can override that nondiscriminatory referral procedure is if you're operating under a PLA that states that you have to go by the, uh, first, first call for the priorities zip codes.
Right, but, but we have non-union workers who work for a company, so they would never be on that list because they have a job, so that's, and, and I think, I think, I, I mean, I, I, I support, um, Councilmember Coors' motion, I, I, we're now getting further into question, I, I'm adding, just adding questions to my list, the more we talk, I'm adding more questions, I'm sorry, I, there's, there's just more to, to find out.
So Councilmember Garner, I wanna make sure that you get your questions answered, and so I'm wondering, you know, if we continue this to the next meeting, or a future meeting, I think we'll still be in this place, so, you know, what is it that we need to do? Is it that we need to ask those questions right now, um, so that we can address some of these, because we do, like Mayor Protem Middleton said, even though it's late and, you know, we have other items, we have momentum, and I would hate to redo this, um, in two weeks, I don't think that would be effective, and I'm confused about what would happen in between, um, the meetings in order to, you know, really get progress, so is it that we just need to hash out some of these issues and questions right now?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it right now, but again, I think, again, we, we, I mean, I disagree that we did goal setting on this, I don't think that we did, we, we've talked kind of in general about all of these types of things, but we didn't sit down and say, what is our goal for entering a CWA? The CWA just suddenly appeared on the agenda, um, for me, I, I, I didn't know that it was gonna come onto the agenda, I didn't have that, you know, the first time, right? And it's come on since, I get that, but, I mean, we all know, we're, we're working with a million competing interests, and this is one thing, and there's a million other things that I also have on my plate for city council, so it's, it's difficult for me to be making this my entire focus when my residents are asking me to do something else, um, which is why I still have a lot of questions, um, but, but the other thing about this is, I think what Councilmember Coors is still raising is, we have section 3.8 that talks about core employees, and it, it specifically talks about the process for choosing employees, and that you have to go through the union hiring hall after a certain number, so if we have electrical workers, for instance, who are non-union, who win the bid, and they are following all of the rules for the CWA, after a certain point, they have to go through and get all their workers through the union, which means that maybe they have five more workers that, of their own, that they would like to bring on, they can't do that because we have to go through this process, and they can't bring them on whether or not they're local people because of the, the wording in this contract. So that's my concern there, is I understand that we, that if they go into, to the union, if, if, if they, the electrical workers have no more employees that they need to have on this project, and they go through the, the union hall, I understand the union hall will then give them Palm Springs workers who are in their list, but I'm talking about in circumstances where these are huge projects, we're talking million dollars or more, where the people who win the bid cannot bring in their people because they're required to go through the union hall. I just don't understand why we can't have some kind of one-to-one on that, or why it's not, I, I don't see what the benefit is, other than benefiting the unions, I don't understand what the benefit is for our residents and our companies that have been here for decades.
So Mr. Perez or Mr. Elrod, if you wanna respond to that, or, or city staff as well, something?
No, I, I don't know how to respond to that, to tell you the truth, um, you know, we've, every core, every core clause in every agreement has this, and we've never run into any of these concerns, considerations, or even problems, so, I can understand the example that you're getting, I, I guess that comes along with the assumption that every local contractor is non-union, and they're gonna put every one of their employees on the Palm Springs job, and that, because that may be the only job they have, I'm, I'm a little confused by that, sort of the reasoning there, so, um, all I can do is make it very clear here, the core language, uh, that we would agree to is the core language that's in the agreement.
So does any other seat, community workforce agreement have those terms or those considerations?
No.
Okay, can, can we talk to just, I mean, Jeff Ballinger, City Attorney, do you, are you following what I'm saying, and do you have any comments?
I, I am following, a, a, and it sounds as though you have a, a thorough understanding of what the core worker, um, requirement is, it sounds like there just may be a difference of kind of policy position in terms of the, the results of that, uh, among some of the council members, and, and, you know, a, as Councilmember Coors said, that, that's, that happens on legislative bodies.
Okay, thank you, I just needed a little, I, I'm, honestly, I feel like I'm not being understood, so I just needed a second opinion, thank you.
So, you know.
Mayor Protem Middleton, and then Councilmember Coors.
We've been at this for a long time, and I know everybody here likes to get to consensus, and so do I, uh, maybe what we do need is to, uh, let this sit for, uh, two weeks and give, uh, Councilmember Coors and Garner and Woods, uh, an opportunity to sit down with, uh, the folks, uh, both on, at staff and with, uh, the unions, and walk through processes and procedures, there, there may be some policy issues that we just have some differences of opinion on, uh, but, uh, we've, we, we don't rush into votes, uh, and, uh, if it takes three hours or four hours to get it right, let's, let's take that time.
Okay, so there is a motion to do so on the floor, to continue this item to the next council meeting, um, staff does, and there's a second, and we were in a very long protracted discussion, um, trying to see if we needed to do that, or if we could, um, get some more consensus tonight, so for staff, does that work to bring this item to the next council meeting?
I think, just to clarify, I think my motion was limited to those five issues, so we're not, right, I mean, obvious, you know, we're gonna see the contract again, but if it doesn't change, just to give people time to meet and have those conversations, right, and, yeah, we may have different policy views, and that's, that's fine, um, but I don't want people to feel rushed to vote, um, as Mayor Protem said, I wanna give people the chance to ask those questions, that, you know, I think you, we fortunately had, and sometimes we don't, and we know what that's like, so, um.
So city staff, does that work for you?
I, I can certainly get that done and have those conversations with, uh, with legal counsel for the Trades Council, um, I'll defer to the city manager and assistant city manager in terms of what that agenda looks like, but we can certainly turn it around in that time.
Yeah, Mayor and council, um, you know, to, to provide some time, because keep in mind, the agenda goes out a week from tonight for the next meeting, so I don't know that in next week we can resolve these issues and schedule the time with the council members to meet with the Trades Council, uh, but we can certainly get it on the next agenda, I just don't know if those issues that you've raised tonight would be resolved, um, I don't know if it's worth confirming which of the other bullet points, like the termination clause, um, and the, um, you know, it sounds like there was consensus on not having a clause for rebidding, so I mean, I think we can, I think it sounds to me that it's narrowed down to the exemption for the local contractors, is the real issue here, um, if there's consensus from council that there's no need for a termination clause or a shorter term, which the trades have said they would not agree to, um, and the other issue we haven't really touched on, which was even for the non-union contractors who do get the job, their core workers, their fringe benefits are paid, uh, in lieu to the, uh, to the, um, uh, to, I don't wanna say it wrong, to the, um, the, the, the union trusts, rather than to the employees, so we hadn't really talked on that bullet point issue, um, but it, it sounds like that's related to the local contractor exemption, so those two bullet point issues are what we have to, uh, sit down with Councilmember Garner and Councilmember Woods and Coors, perhaps, to resolve before we bring it back to the next agenda. agenda.
I wouldn't say resolve, but have questions answered, so people feel they have all the information they need to vote, right? We may not, because there are different views on council on what the answer should be. So I don't know that they'll get resolved, but I want to make sure people get their questions answered, and then we can decide if we can resolve it in a way that works for us and the trades. I think the other issues were smaller, right? How to do the attorney fees and goals and things like that. Those we might be able to resolve in that time, but I think the other issue, we, I don't expect staff to be able to resolve that, right? It's, we're just going to have to make a decision at some point. But I want people to get their, the time that I think the mayor and I have had with, you know, the two union leaders here, to answer those questions. If that's okay with the two union leaders to have that time.
I agree with staff. Two weeks is not much time. We've had well over a year into this now, and have moved fine on language, but apparently not fine on communication and understanding across the entire group of electeds. And so we're probably going to need some more time.
For staff, what would be a good time to bring this back?
We'll suggest the first meeting in May, May 13th.
Would that be enough time for the building trades representative? That would be May 6.
I think it depends on the amount of questions we're going to need to answer. So, you know, if, it might help move things if we can start working on a set of written questions. This process, a sort of Q and A on the fly in a public forum makes, makes things a bit less productive, in my view. So we would like to do this in a more efficient manner.
Thank you. We would too. Though democracy's not always efficient, so thank you for bearing with us. Okay, so there is a motion to continue this to, it sounds like a date certain of May 6. Is that okay with, with you, Councilmember Coors, you made the motion?
Yes.
In order, sorry, Councilmember Wood?
Was that May 13? Did I miss the date wrong?
No, May 6. We moved, it's the first Thursday because of a religious holiday, if I recall.
So to continue to a date certain of May 6, in order to have each council member ask questions of the building trades and of other community stakeholders and of staff, and then, Councilmember Coors, you said to, to work on the issues of the attorney fee provision, the split zip codes for preference for Palm Springs residents, and tracking goals.
Yeah, tracking and goals, you know, coming up with some measurables, just so we're doing that. I think everyone was on board with those. And I'm happy to, you know, continue working on those, and we can bring something back with liaisons, if that's good, but others should weigh in to the trades. And I think on the, that one other issue, the local contractor as it relates to Palm Springs employees, non-union employees only, is, I think, just getting questions answered. We understand, I understand your position is what it is, and that's going to have to be a council decision, if that is acceptable or not, if it can change, or you wouldn't do this if it changes at all. But at least, it's really time to do those other things and answer the questions, so we can have a conversation where people feel really informed. I think that's important, that everyone feels really informed on council.
And for our community too, right?
Yeah, no.
Someone who is struggling with this, and it's a difficult issue, complicated issue for our community. I might ask that staff, when we bring it back on May 6, do also include some information, I think this is a really excellent staff report, that's really far down the line, you know, just on the remaining issues, and I know you attach the initial staff reports, but I wonder if you could, maybe Marcus, as the assistant city manager, could bring some data about, if we have it, about where, you know, workers are coming from for our projects now, where responsive bidders are coming from, and the, and the people, you know, doing these projects for the city are coming from, as well as, you know, any details about how it works in practice. Because one, I think this conversation might be sort of divorced from how it works in practice, which is why Mr. Perez might be struggling. And two, I think we might have, like, enemy, perfectly the enemy of the good, because this might be progress for what council wants, from what we have now. And that's just a policy decision from council, but I think we need to have a conversation in context of what it would look like from city staff, if that would be helpful. Okay, so there's a motion in the second, so we will do the roll call vote on that, on that motion, to continue to a date certain.
Can I just add a comment before we?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. For Mr. Perez and Mr. Elrod, I, I would hope that we can get to yes. You know, I'd really like to see us get to yes. I think this would be a, a very positive thing for both sides. So a, as we work through this and answer questions, keep that in mind. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. On the substitute motion by Councilmember Coors, seconded by Councilmember Woods, Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Middleton?
I'm.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
And for clarity, for the minute's sake, this is to address the provisions related to changing, or splitting of the zip code, the attorney fee monetary damage provision, and to track progress and establish goals, and then partially to ask questions about the core hiring ratio. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having this conversation with us. We know it's very late, so we appreciate your time. Does council need a break before we continue? I know we have a number of items left, though they're shorter items. I saw one head nod. Councilmember Coors?
Just a suggestion that we do public comment on non-agenda items, so we're not calling people after 11, and maybe look at the agenda if there's anything we want to kick, but if there's nothing too long, we should push through it.
Thank you. Just a note for the record, as city clerk, are there any public comments?
Madam Mayor and council, there's no public comment for non-agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, forgot to say that at 9. I did set an alarm for 9, so we don't forget it, and we can do that. Okay, so we will go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and then we will, we'll recess for 10 minutes, and we'll come back and discuss the order of the remaining items on the agenda and complete those items.
We'll come back from our recess and we will move to new business. So there's a request to do item 5B first because we have people on the line standing by. So if we, council is okay with that, we will move to item 5B. Consideration and adoption of revisions to the city's investment policy. If we can have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Nancy Pauley. We're here for the consideration and adoption of revisions to the city's investment policy. This is an annual policy that must be appropriated. And then we also wanted to remind you that on January 28th, 2021, the council approved appointment of Chandler Asset Management System to provide investment advisory services to the city. In the past, we did have a deputy treasurer and that position has been left unfunded. And so what we did is we deleted that position and added this investment services for half the price. So we do have Chris and Mia from Chandler Asset Management to answer any questions that you may have on the revisions to the policy. So some of the, on the PowerPoint that I have here today, some of the recommended changes are to align with the government stakehold and best practices. Chandler will integrate city preferences for socially responsible investing. And city staff will manage liquidity needs through life and checking while Chandler will manage reserve portfolio. So I know the words that Mia and Chris wanted to talk about, a little bit about the longer duration strategy for the reserve portfolio. So Chris or Mia, would you like to take this portion over?
...............
Can't hear.
Okay, Chris and Mia, you're live with the council.
Good evening, Honorary Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. This is Mia Corral-Brown. Hi, good evening.
Okay, you're back with council.
Great. My apologies for the technical difficulties. Good evening, Honorary Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I'm Mia Corral-Brown. I'm a senior relationship manager at Chandler Asset Management. It's appropriate to have been engaged by the city earlier this year. I have Christopher McCary, a portfolio strategist, who's going to discuss very briefly the investment strategy that we are recommending for the city. Chris?
Perfect, thank you Mia. And again, Madam Mayor and distinguished council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Part of our recommendation in reviewing the city's portfolio, as well as the city's investment policy with staff, is we are recommending following a government benchmark of a one to five-year benchmark for the city's portfolio. Generally, what that's going to do is invest in longer maturities to be able to take advantage of some increased yields along the yield curve, but still following the parameters set forth by California Code and set forth by the city's investment policy. All of our recommendations and how we view portfolio management centers around risk management. And it's focusing on those tenants of safety and liquidity that are the hallmarks and the standards set forth by California Government Code for the management of the city's investment portfolio. Part of having a longer duration strategy generally contains that we will actually be doing periodic rebalancing, but we will be working with staff with our recommendations, following the investment policy, as well as integrating the city's preferences for the socially responsible investing inside of our investment process. Any questions or more details about that that I can provide?
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you. And my compliments on the staff report and on the work and recommendations so far. Just a couple of questions. Could you define for us your definition of socially responsible investing?
Responsible investing?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so generally what we're following is socially responsible investing is generally on a case-by-case basis, understanding that's been established from a environmental, social, and governance factors. We integrate those into our process, making sure that we follow that tenants of safety and liquidity, but also in a sense of doing no harm. From the socially responsible investing process, we'll definitely work with staff to make sure we monitor. We actually went through and used following specific standards set forth by the Global Industrial Classification Standards, following Coward Social Index, as well as another organization, 350.org, for incorporating those types of practices into the process for ESG and SRI investing into a portfolio. We generally take a concept as well in our own credit process to make sure that we are following a philosophy, not to buy companies that generally will go against practices and standards that council has put forth for programs for citizens of the city. I kind of think back to programs that are established for tobacco and alcohol beverage producers that we don't invest in those because those go against generally programs that are established by council to dissuade youth or members of the citizens from engaging with those types of practices. So it is incorporating many aspects into the process, but also in working with staff to maintain that socially responsible investing process and practice.
So you would not be investing in tobacco or alcohol. What about gun manufacturing and thermal coal?
If those are specifically areas that council and staff do not want to invest in, those are portions that we will not invest in. We have gone forth and already put together an approved corporate issuer list where we filtered them through for socially responsible funds and provided a list to staff in the sense to make sure that we're getting approval to invest in those types of, of those types of companies and making sure that if gun manufacturing, weapon manufacturing are not included in those, those will not be included in that list.
I know that gun manufacturing came up on council in early 2018. I do not recall thermal coal, tobacco, or alcohol, but I suspect there may be a majority on those issues as well. But I'll come back to those. I want to ask a question a little differently than the issue around socially responsible investing. And you may have gotten a heads up on this question. The, on page two of the report, section nine, there's a recommendation that collateralized mortgage obligations be permissible to be a maximum of 20% of the portfolio and a maximum of 5% per individual insurer. My concern with that is I think we need to know more as to what a collateralized mortgage security is going to include. And I do have concerns regarding overall diversification that would have as much as 20% of our portfolio in an individual investment strategy allocation.
That's a very valid question and it's something that we are asked frequently as the impacts from 2008, 2009 are still very fresh in everyone's mind. Per the recommendations within side of the investment policy that were made, the recommendations to include pass-through securities, which include asset-backed, mortgage-backed, and collateralized mortgage obligations, are following the recommendations set forth by California Government Code. And those collateralized mortgage obligations are not the traditional CMOs, mortgage-backed securities that everyone remembers from the challenges back in 2008, 2009 because those were private label securities that were issued by a bank. The recommendations that were being made for incorporating the mortgage pass-through and the collateralized mortgage obligations on the investment policy, for the city's investment policy, are those that are only going to be issued by US agencies, Fannie and Freddie, and in a sense have the implied backing of the United States government. Furthermore, we're actually making a recommendation, and this is in line with California Government Code, that those securities must be rated double A or higher by the national rating agencies. So generally, we're investing in the top tier of these securities. They are mortgage securities coming from Fannie and Freddie that have the implied backing of the United States government. We are in line with the recommendation per California Code for that asset class to have a maximum of 20%. However, in practice, that generally falls under the line of around 5% to 10% for portfolio for diversification. I would also like to reiterate the fact that right now, these types of securities are not something we are recommending to be incorporated into portfolios. We are recommending to be able to have them to be included in the investment policy so that the city has the ability to have all of the hours in their quiver for all of the permissible investments that are established by 53601 from California Government Code. Right now, the issuance, the availability of agency mortgage-backed securities and their valuations are actually very tight right now, meaning that you're not getting that additional compensation and yield for those types of securities. And we haven't seen some issuance lately, a lot due to the fact of some of the changes we saw in the mortgage market. But they generally are very, very high-rated mortgages. They are mortgages that we follow in the tronc and must be double A or better with inside those. And they are only agency mortgages, they are not private label mortgages, and they have the implied backing of the United States government.
All right. Thank you, that's helpful. Last question, and forgive me, but under this investment change, in terms of when you would do a reallocation, what is the role of city council in approving any reallocation?
So through our process and with the agreement that's been established between Chandler Asset Management, the city, and a non-discourcelled relationship, we would engage with city staff with regards to our recommendations for the portfolio. And I'm assuming, pardon those, but I assume the term reallocation was meaning kind of rebalancing or buying and selling for a specific portfolio?
Correct.
Okay. So those recommendations, we would work with, myself as a member of our investment management team, as well as with our deputy investment officer, Jason Schmidt, as well as the other portfolio managers in the team, would come and make recommendations to staff with regards to our recommendations for a purchase, as well as any recommendations for the selling of a security to be able to maintain the overall strategy of the portfolio. And so that is the process that we've been, that's been set up and the agreement. With regards to the reporting to council, I believe what the reporting would be centered around would be any downgrades to specific investments in the portfolio to maintain and to make sure the council is aware that they fell below any investment parameters from a rating department that's established inside of the investment policy. Council is also, also making recommendations into the investment policy to be in line with code for monthly reports from a transaction standpoint.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other council questions or comments? If I could ask some follow-up on Mayor Protem's comments about the social investing, could you detail more the process that we might follow if council did want to give more clear direction about what those issues may be?
I did mention to them that we don't want any weapons such as Walmart who sells guns and, and so I would review them. Even if they have a list and they send them to me, I always do a little bit more research, research before approving them.
Thanks. I'm wondering sort of the formal process to do that, about how to give directions for, in particular, I'm interested in companies or issues related to the environment and sustainability since that's an important issue for our community and there might be a few others there. So I know we can't do that on the floor tonight and talk about issues. Is there a recommendation that you might have that you would bring back? Or, or we can just do that separate and apart from this approval?
We could go ahead and do that separately, but we, I had discussed that with both me and Chris already. Those options of sustainability, climate, and everything else. But if there's more detail that we want to get into, if we get this approved, we can discuss that and I could put that, give them that information.
Okay, thank you. Other council member comments or questions? Or is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve and ask that as part of that motion, staff come back and to meet with city council and have a full discussion over what we would prefer as a definition of socially responsible investing and assess that as a specific issue at a later date.
Thank you, I second that motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Christie.
Okay.
The mayor.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to. Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you, so there was also a request to consider item 5E out of order because we have DCE staff on the line, standing by, so if that's okay with council, we will move to item 5E, which is a request for council input on the desert community energy options for low-income customers and carbon-free products. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, mayor and council members. I am here with Katie Barrows from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, which provides staff support to desert community energy. We wanted to get your input on three items tonight so that we can take that information back to the DCE board for their consideration at their next meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie for her presentation, and if I can get the clicker.
Great.
All right. Katie, are you on?
I am on, yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Great, I'll go ahead, right ahead, may I have the first slide, please? Thank you. Honorable mayor and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We really appreciate the support from Palm Springs Council and community for committing to cleaner, carbon-free electricity and local control with desert community energy. Next slide. Briefly, this one's good, whoops, sorry, one back, please, if you would, thanks, Patrick. Briefly, here's how DCE works. DCE buys power focusing on greener and cleaner electricity and local whenever possible. Southern California Edison still delivers that power through their transmission and distribution lines, and they also provide customer service and billing, and we work very closely in partnership with Edison in this process. Next slide, please. Thanks to the Palm Springs community, we've made great progress. Palm Springs has reduced your carbon footprint by almost 94,000 metric tons, and that's the equivalent of taking over 20,000 cars off the road. Desert community energy customers enrolled in Desert Saver have saved almost $245,000. And very recently, we've met some of our core goals of adding new renewables to our portfolio. One of those, the local wind energy project that we celebrated in February, and more recently, a solar and battery storage project that DCE has signed contracts with, and I'll have more about that in a few minutes. Next slide, please. DCE board is looking for input from the council on several topics as we, like others, seek to reduce our costs and better serve our customers in these challenging times. In January 2020, as you might recall, with the support of the Palm Springs City Council, DCE started a subsidy for the low-income customers who are enrolled in what we refer to as the CARE and FARA programs. These customers today receive 100% carbon-free electricity at Desert Saver rates, which are below Southern California Edison. As a cost-saving measure, DCE is considering spending that carbon-free subsidy, which would result in savings of about $120,000. Next slide, please. This would mean no change to those low-income customers who would continue to pay lower rates below Edison, however, they would no longer be carbon-free. This would continue, however, that the low rates that those, that low-income customers have paid since April of 2020, and this subsidy could be reinstated at a time in the future when the DCE board considers it prudent to do so. Next slide, please. One of the other programs that we're interested in, your input on, is a bill assistance program. We're really trying to help those customers who are struggling to pay their bills, including their electric bill. This is a program that would focus on helping customers get current on their bill by offering a credit for those who are or decide to enroll in a payment plan. Residential customers would get a $30 credit and non-residential a $55 credit. This is a one-time credit. Utilities and community choice agencies are finding higher delinquency rates with customers having challenges paying their bills, and this is a program modeled after successful programs that other CCAs, including the Clean Power Alliance in Los Angeles, have offered that have been effective in helping those customers. It also leverages some of the cost-saving and programs that Southern California Edison is offering customers in response to the COVID pandemic. Next slide, please. Finally, the DCE board is looking for input on the environmental goals for our 100% carbon-free product. Unfortunately, higher power, excuse me, higher power prices have been at levels not seen since the energy crisis 20 years ago. CPCC is not only environmentally conscious, but must be cost-conscious, and so we're looking at three different options. The first option would continue with 100% carbon-free, but would reduce the carbon, excuse me, the renewable content from 50% to about 36% using in-state renewables, and that does result in a cost savings of about $628,000. The second option would be for 100% carbon-free with again 36% renewable, but a mix that would meet compliance standards, but offer additional cost savings up to 100, excuse me, $738,000. And finally, a third option would reduce the carbon content to 80% and also continue with a lower renewable content, similar to number two. We anticipate that this temporary adjustment would help DCE meet our financial goals in these challenging times. The reduction in short-term, in short-term environmental goals would help us with our environmental health, but also provide opportunities for DCE to continue to invest in renewables in the coming years. Next slide, please. Back to the good news, we were very excited to join the mayor and council members in February to launch the Teragen contracts out in Palm Springs, a very local project. This is bringing local jobs and important cost savings to DCE and our customers, and Teragen expects to flip the switch on those very large turbines sometime, perhaps even as soon as tomorrow, so we'll let you know about that. The solar and battery storage project that we are now contracting with advances that important technology, brings climate and grid resilience, and we're very excited to have that new technology as one of our, part of our portfolio. Next slide, please. DCE is proud to be serving Palm Springs and your commitment to environmental goals and sustainability. We focus on community reinvestment, local jobs, and local power sources, and we're exploring opportunities to bring more storage to Palm Springs. And with that, I wish I could turn it over to councilmember Coors. Thank you very much.
Sure. Well, thank you for the presentation and making it quick, given the hour, we appreciate that. So Mayor Protem Middleton is the alternate, we worked, unlike most alternates, we work together pretty closely on these, and similar to the advisory committee, our recommendations are, you know, the subsidy from DCE that we voted to do is really a subsidy from all the non-CARE, FARA, low-income customers, and, you know, given, given COVID and the summer rates and people being out of jobs and businesses being closed, the DCE board, based on Mayor Protem Middleton and I, agreed to keep rates low using reserves artificially low, so it was closer to 3% to 4% above for the carbon-free and lower for the Desert Saver during the hottest months, because we really were concerned. And so ending that subsidy now, given we're seeing what we are in rates, a lot of it's based on what happened in Texas, right, every utility is going to face the same issue, I think is the right way, is try and save other customers money as well, while keeping the CARE FARA at the Desert Saver rate. As to the other two items, I think we both support doing, staying with 100% carbon-free at the lowest possible cost, so I think that was the other key item, and what was the third one, because it's late? That was the third one, I missed the second one.
Bill assistance program.
Oh, and the bill assistance program, and it's similar also, I mean, Edison has one, and it's just basically my understanding of it from our DCE board meeting is we sort of give some bill assistance for people who agree to a payment plan, and just by comparison, you know, we're seeing, you know, about 30% being behind in their bills, Edison's seeing closer to 40% from my understanding, and others who aren't 100% carbon-free are seeing the same, if not higher, issues. So we're predicting a 3% default, but we don't know exactly where it's going to be, so the best thing is so people don't default, right? We don't want that, we want to work with folks who are struggling. So anyway, I, you know, probably best Katie Barrows can answer some questions that people have.
Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I'm not sure who either of you can answer, I suppose. My question is just regarding the CARE FARA. When we first discussed this, at least when I first discussed it, I think back in February of 2020, one of the things that Tom Kirk and I kind of discussed was that outreach, because he said there, we're going to personally do outreach to every single home to make sure that people are on CARE FARA. So I'm wondering if there's an update regarding that outreach and if that happened?
Yeah, no, so it did, it did happen, and then COVID happened, which limited a lot of the outreach, but what we found was during that, because of notices that were sent out and other efforts, the numbers of folks who did register for CARE FARA went up considerably. But I don't know if you have that data or not, but we can definitely get that and send it out to council and post it for the public. But Lifter Eyes thought, based on the numbers that they were seeing, it didn't make sense to continue that, because most of the, those folks were getting signed up due to COVID, unfortunately, but fortunately signed up.
Okay.
Yeah, but it'd be great to get those numbers, because, you know, if we're still missing some, you know, whether by phone, there are other ways that we can do that, so that's a good point. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, yeah, that would, that's just my interest is in if there are anyone that's missing, then let's find out. And then, and in terms of the Desert Saver, you know, we agreed as a council to sign everyone up, I think, for that, that middle tier automatically, and then they could bump down lower, or they could increase to the 100% carbon-free, except anyone enrolled in CARE and/or FARA was getting that carbon-free at a discount, at the same, you know, the lower rate. I'm curious if this is a good time to possibly change that and have everybody be in Desert Saver if these numbers continue to kind of increase with people defaulting. I just wanted to raise that, maybe this isn't the time to discuss it, but I, I'm, there's a lot of people who are kind of on that line of, they don't, they can't get CARE FARA, but they're still struggling, and I think, and what I've heard from a lot of people is that they have a really hard time doing this opt-out and transition, and I know it's supposed to be simple, but I haven't tried it, so I can't speak to it, but I, I get a lot of people being confused by it. So I'm just wondering if there, if you all have discussed ways in which we can assist people in that transition and kind of making sure that, that people who need to be in the Desert Saver program get into it.
Yeah, so let me answer that, councilmember. So one thing, there are, there are two options right now, there was the thought of having a third, because there were some people who wanted 100% renewable, but we didn't want to make it that convoluted for folks, so we took out the highest-priced one, even though there are some people who would like that for the rollout, because we really want to make this simple. We have talked at the board about how we can do more outreach, you know, we've done probably the most of any utility on this as far as trying to do that, but given COVID, we did talk at the last meeting, and we can bring it back up at this one, on how we can really do some more targeted outreach to folks about Desert Saver, because we're, it's still the lowest other than if you have your own solar and electricity you can get in Palm Springs, and we do want to make sure everyone knows they have that option. So, and some of the mailers, you know, because of state law, had so much information on them, I think they were tougher folks, so we've done, so really doing maybe another mailer and maybe some phone work to let people know about this option, I think is a good idea. So we talked about bringing that back, so we can talk about this, I think, at our next meeting, doing those things. But I agree, I think we need to do some more outreach again, given what the summer looks like it's going to be. So thank you.
Other councilmember questions or comments?
Yeah, I would concur with the comments that councilmember Garner and councilmember Coors has said, I think we do need to do another outreach to individuals to make sure that if price is the overwhelming issue for you, Desert Saver is the appropriate option. If you're in a position to be able to make the investment, that it is going to cost a little bit more in order to be in the carbon-free, then you're doing something really good for, for the folks in the community and for the future. But that's something that has to be affordable, and for an awful lot of individuals, they're just not in a financial position to be able to do that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to add that the bill assistance program does include some outreach that would help customers to be familiarized with that. We have been continuing to keep the carbon, excuse me, the Desert Saver up in the forefront, but we would plan to incorporate more outreach on Desert Saver as part of that messaging on the bill assistance program, and that's something we'd be anticipating going forward soon.
If, if I could add, this has been a really tough year to be purchasing energy, and a really tough year to be, for it to be your first year in operation. We're not the only CCA across the state who is really having to work hard in this particular energy market, and while all of us would like to be 100% renewable, that would be an incredibly expensive product today, and there's maybe a few people out there who could afford that product, but it's not the norm, and it's not the standard that I think we, we can go to. So I think one of the, one of the two options that increases non-renewables but still is carbon-free is something that in this environment, we need to, to go to. I would, I would hate to have to consider going to something less than 100% carbon-free. That's the way we advertised it, that's something that we have to, I think, stay with. But we need to be very honest with everyone in the public. The last year was really a tough market for purchasing energy, and there's every reason to believe with what's happened in the environment over the last few months, this is going to be another tough year.
Thank you, it sounds like there might be a motion and a second to be made, and then we can see if there's any further just question and questions.
Sure, so does staff have the recommendations I made, or do you want me to go through them again, if I can?
Actually, this is council input, so do you need a motion, or are you just?
No, I probably don't, I just, I asked us to come back to council before I voted, so I think that's enough, if there's consensus on that?
Yeah, I, I agree with you. There's just one point in the staff report, I had a question about, Jeff, councilmember Coors. It says here that on page four, disconnections will resume after June. I understand if the utility and Edison disconnects people, I get that, and I understand that you would do the same, however, because this is our desert community energy, and I'm just curious what the policy is on that, kind of how that's, that's done, because ideally we, we wouldn't disconnect anyone from their electricity, regardless of payment.
Yeah, it was actually a question I was going to ask next week, so if Barry knows, because, you know, we're, we're just the, we don't do the bills, and we don't, you know, Edison has all the costs for maintenance, the power lines, it's half or more of the bill is Edison's, so I don't know that we can unilaterally, so I was going to bring that up, but I appreciate you raising it tonight, so if, I don't know if you know the answer, if you may, because you know this stuff so well.
The, the disconnection date is based on the Public Utilities Commission having at the end of the governor, actually, in his COVID response. I think we are, part of our reason for the bill assistance is for us to work hard to retain those customers and hopefully bring them back, and we actually are seeing some decline in our delinquency rates. And actually, maybe I can get a more certain answer for that question for the DCE board meeting, and also to provide that to and also to provide that to the council. But it's our intent to work hard to keep customers, certainly, it is an Edison decision, but it's certainly our intent to work with them to keep customers, so they're not disconnected from there.
And I agree, anything we can do to disconnect people in the middle of the summer in the desert is, if there's a way to avoid that, you know, that is, we can do, we should do it. So thanks for raising that.
I agree. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Southern California Edison has a series of ways that you can reduce your electric bill through incentives. And I'll give you an example. They can put mechanisms on your air conditioner, and they can brown out those air conditioners at a certain time of the year. And you get, you used to get a cost savings from Edison for that. I'm sure Edison still has that program along with weatherizing your home and things of that nature that actually saves energy and reduces your costs. Does DCE have any of those programs?
So one of the things that we are doing, just in terms of the Edison programs, is helping customers become aware of those opportunities. And our website, as well as our social media, are promoting some of the programs that Edison has. DCE hopes to offer those programs in the future. And we are looking at things that we can do that are no, are low cost to help customers and a lot of education about energy efficiency and reducing their costs. We, we're adding that information to our website. At this time, our really focus is building our financial reserves and establishing that fiscal help. But at a point, the excess revenues, if you will, could be used for those kinds of programs. And we're also exploring some other opportunities, like you heard about it, our Energy Environment Committee, Sebag Wide, a renewable, excuse me, a regional energy network program that would also be a way to bring some potential funding for energy efficiency to the Valley.
And another question, it seems to me that we're rewarding people for not paying their bill. We're giving them an incentive of $30 or $55 or whatever it was for not paying their bill. I, I don't understand the philosophy behind that.
Well, the program is based on their signing up for a payment plan. So they would have a payment plan that would have them paying their bill. And that is to help those customers get back on track to move forward, so that they are not delinquent. And it also helps DCE to recover some of the losses that we would find as a result of those delinquent customers. But it does require that they are on a payment plan. So in order to do that, they need to have, at least making some kind of payment.
Got it. So the, so it's an incentive to get onto a payment plan, then?
Exactly.
Is what I'm hearing. Oh, great. Thank you, Katie, for that.
Thank you. I just had a few, I guess, comments that you can take up at the board meeting. And thank you so much to Councilmember Coors for bringing this to council. You're really diligent about bringing policy issues to the council to give you input on as a board member there. So thank you, we appreciate that. My question is mostly about the length of these approvals, so these changes. I understand the fiscal health element is really important so that we can continue to, you know, save the environment here with this program. And so I just wonder sort of what's the, the length of the term of some of these changes. And so I do think, you know, we want as clean as energy as we can get. Obviously, their rate matters as well. So I just wonder about the length of those changes and those types of programs. But I support the recommendations from the two liaisons. And thank you to Councilmember Coors for his really true regional leadership on making this happen for our residents and for our environment. So with that, Katie, do you have any final things to add or any other information or direction you might need?
No, I really appreciate the chance to get your input, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Katie. We really appreciate you being here so late at night with us. Thank you for your work.
Thanks for moving me up a little bit on the schedule. I really appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Thank you. So we said that we would choose what's left over in the agenda, but really, we have to take action on item 5B, which is for the House's, the House's request for community projects, because there's a deadline on that. And then the only other remaining item is item 5A, which is an inclusionary housing program. So I might propose that we move forward on item 5B, and then we probably will leave item 5A for a future meeting, if that works for council. I see not. We can, we can discuss it, but let's do item 5C.
C, Charlie.
I'm sorry, 5C. So the next item is 5C, consideration of the U.S. House of Representatives request for community project submissions as part of, as part of the federal fiscal year 2022 budget process. If we could have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As I've detailed in the staff report, for those of the public that don't know, the U.S. Congress is considering a form of earmarks to allow for local projects to be recognized for federal funding through the next federal fiscal year 2022 budget. The source of funding comes from various House subcommittees. And Congressmember Ruiz is entertaining, each member of Congress can only entertain up to 10 project funding requests in their districts. And so Congressman Ruiz's office is accepting one request from each city or county agency in, in his district. I, I went through, as best I could, the particulars of the funding requests, the nature of where they come from, the limitations. I will admit that it is in flux. When I wrote this staff report, there was reference that a, an earmark or a project funding request could be up to 10 million. It actually is on the order of a million dollars, consistent with earmarks when they were last approved about 10 years ago. And so based on that, Councilmember Coors and I had a Zoom meeting today with Ruiz's staff. And based on the fact that they're requesting and entertaining requests of not more than $1 million, we would recommend the council consider the option that was outlined as purchasing the airport property in and around the boxing club and the two-acre vacant parcel on El Cielo Road and near Ed Baristo. That property was appraised last year at 1.6 million. And so we would suggest that we pursue and request a million-dollar funding, which would be supported with $600,000 of local funding through the city's housing or other related funds. And so, given the lateness of the hour, I'll end it there. But we will have a lot of work to do to put together the letters of support and get the funding requests submitted to Ruiz's office by the deadline of Wednesday. So with that, Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Coors?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work on this, Mr. Fuller. Really appreciate it. The time crunch on this was very quick. And the goal of this project would be to do, a project similar to, in, who's in it? What type of housing? Was this modular or not? Similar to something like the Agave project that we approved. And we have talked to Sebag and the county, and I think we'd have support from both, but we need to do other outreach as well, because we need, you know, the county's participation in making a project like that work. But I think Sebag would also be interested in supporting this kind of project as, and our goals of more of these affordable housing projects. So I just want to share, that would, that would be the goal, unless people have other goals for what that project would be used for. But the idea is the goal would be for a, not necessarily senior, but it could be, there's a senior affordable housing project that's great right next to it, that is on airport land that's leased. So this would, you know, help the costs for residents as well who would move into this. But the goal is to have, you know, a mixed, low-income affordable housing project.
Thank you. Any council questions or comments? Councilmember Wood.
In making this competitive in this year, I mean, it's not competitive, because it's an earmark. But would we not want to have a bigger plan of what we really wanted there versus just buying the land? Because you can buy the land, and then it could sit fallow for 15 years or 20 years. I mean, do we not want some sort of a, a better plan or leverage some of the 10, the remainder of the $10 million we've had on a project, maybe behind Home Depot or whatever, that parcel back there?
So a couple of things. One, I mean, the max is a million, and I think the county is already working and has access to capital if that, if they can do that project, and don't need that, we already own that. So our donation of the land is what we'll get typically in an affordable housing project versus money. Often, we had to do both, as we did with Agave. But I think what, at least I took away from the call and Marcus jumped in, is getting the support from the folks who would have to be part of it, right? Like the county. Because for Agave to work, or the one at the, the DAP to work, you know, the county has to be supportive, because they, they're the ones with the housing vouchers for low-income folks to make these projects work. But coming up with the grand plan in two weeks is challenging. So we, you know, we want their, they're saying that they are, you know, confident we can get this done as part of it, right? And it is competitive, by the way, right? Each member of Congress gets to forward 10, and then the committee and then the full house decides which ones to fund. So it will be very competitive, and there was money in this affordable housing bucket. And that's seemed like the best one from talking with the staff.
And is that airport land, it's fallow now, but is it surplus land that we'd want to be purchasing for this purpose? I mean, it's not really going to be, the airport, I don't know if the airport plan has a use for that in the future or not.
No, it, it, it's, it's just held and owned by the airport. So it should be used for airport purposes, you know, obviously outside of the airport. So for example, the senior affordable housing project that's next door is on airport land. It's my understanding, it's leased, and those lease payments accrue to the airport. So the purpose here would be to purchase this, so it could be used for any governmental purpose. In this case, for an affordable housing homelessness navigation center, you know, larger type of consolidated project. Now, the other caveat I want to make is that they are specifically looking for project funding requests where you will spend only the money you need in that next federal fiscal year. So purchasing property is easy to accomplish in one year, and it's certainly an eligible use of those funds. And so we're hopeful that that will generate some interest. And so hopefully Ruiz will select it, and then it'll be awarded through the appropriations process.
And the last question is, thank you, Mark, very much. And the last question is, I assume if there's a housing project next to it, there's no restrictions with the, you know, the airport has a whole kind of circumference around it, that you are limited in what you can build?
Yeah, this, this property is, is outside of those restricted air zones.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? Thank you. I support the recommendation for that, for the application. Thank you to Councilmember Coors for really raising this. I know you're leading the California Mayor's Coalition and flagged this, that we should be submitting a request. And thank you to city staff for all of your work on this very, very quickly as we identified this as a potential source of funds. So thank you all to your work on this. This is just a discussion item and direction.
Actually, I would need an action to adopt the resolution, so it can be included with the funding request. And so the action would be, in this case, to direct staff to submit the funding request for a million dollars towards the purchase of the $1.6 million property that's currently owned by the airport.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We're all ready to move through.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, so it is 11:40. The one remaining item is item 5A, which is the consideration of inclusionary zoning housing program. And then, because item 5E was pulled from the agenda. So would council like to proceed with that final item or continue it to a separate council meeting? Councilmember Garner?
As disappointing as it is, I think I'd rather have a more robust discussion. But my, my one request, because this has been a long time coming, is if we can have this towards the top of our meeting, even if we have public hearings. I don't know how much flexibility we have in our agenda, actually, but that's my request.
Thank you, and I apologize, this was item 5A, but it was so late, and we had speakers who were waiting. So yes, we will thoughtfully put that on the agenda so that it is addressed next time. So we will continue that item to an upcoming council meeting. We don't need to take action to do that, right? City clerk, we can do that by consensus?
No actions needed.
Thank you. Okay, so we have no public comments. So the next item on the agenda is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. Does any council member have requests at this time? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, so a couple of things. One request for our next meeting, if we can bring on consent, a resolution in support of California Assembly Bill 1400, which is California's universal healthcare bill. And I can get a sample resolution, if that's helpful. And then just a couple of reminders, since we have a new city manager. We probably, we need to, at some point, set up a study session on boards and commissions. Something we plan to do, I think, pre-COVID. And just something I think we need to do with our boards and commissions. And I just want to keep that on the list. We also just, I think we've requested that minutes of boards and commissions come to us on consent, so we in the public know all the great work they're doing. So if we could get that, like, once a month, just in a consent, one consent item, that would be really helpful. And then with us potentially being out of all the state COVID orders on June 15th, I think there's the issue of the parklets, and whether we need to have a council discussion. I know staff's working on some potential guidelines. So I just want to keep that on. And we also talked about an outdoor merchandise ordinance. That doesn't need to happen anytime soon, but I just want to make sure that's on the long list. That's, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Our councilmember request. Councilmember Garner?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
I just wanted to.
Councilmember Coors, we didn't catch what that last item was, outdoor?
Merchandise. Yeah. I think we had a meeting with our last city manager to talk about how we dealt with, there's outdoor merchandise allowed in differently, in different business districts, uptown versus downtown, who can't have any, in theory. So there was a talk about looking at revisions to that. And that can come to the Business Retention Subcommittee, if that's the best way forward. But I just wanted to make sure it was on the list, because it came up at that meeting as well.
Member Garner?
Thank you. I do want to just list the noise ordinance, since we, since we are looking at possibly having more, quite a few, I'm sorry, it's late. Things will be significantly opening in June, so it would be nice to discuss this before June, when we're expecting more large-scale events. Then the other thing is, I don't know, to our new city manager, Justin, I'm not sure when you will be ready for this, but I am very anxious to do a goal-setting, visioning session. So I just wanted to raise that. I understand you might want a little bit of time to see how things work here, but that's, that's on top of my list.
Thank you. I agree. That's also on the top of my list. So I know that, Justin, we can, yeah, I don't know if you want to be referred to as Justin or Mr. Clifton, but however you like to participate and lead that with us, I think would be helpful. I don't know if initially, we just want to do some prioritization together, since there is a long list that you're inheriting, that the council has requested. But we haven't given a ton of direction about, you know, which is most important to bring forward in agenda planning. So we could do that on a council meeting day as a discussion item more formally than we do this. But I agree, it would be really great to have a goal-setting workshop with council and get community input on, because I think that we need to all align on a few targeted goals here and measure our progress. Other councilmember requests? Councilmember Wood?
I just want to say, in the boards and the commissions, I would like to bring back the board and commission dinner we had. You know, if we're going to talk about boards You know, if, if we're gonna talk about boards and commissions in a broader sense, I would like one of the options to be bringing back the board and commission dinner where each board and commission can basically do a short little video about what they've accomplished for the year or look at something like maybe where one board or commission presents at every council meeting. Just something to, we have a better coordination between our boards and commissions and the council.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Middleton, do you have agenda requests? Yay, you get the gold star for tonight. Um, I do have one or two requests, let's see. Um, so I have requested that the council consider dedicating the Palm Springs Dog Park near City Hall for Dr. Ruddy, um, for his service to the city of Palm Springs. So if we could agendize that to discuss or the city manager can review that, um, and consider bringing that forward. Um, I just wanted to flag that we got public comment and I, um, talked to a business owner who wanted us to reconsider, um, expanding the categories of assistance for business assistance program, um, so we can consider that in our business task force. Um, and then I received a letter, a request for a letter of support from council, um, addressed to the governing board of the South Coast Air Quality Management District, um, in support of a proposed rule, 2305, which is, um, warehouse indirect source rule to review, um, warehouse actions and investments to reduce emissions. Um, and I wanted to bring that to city council, um, to flag that we received that request. So I know that it's late and we didn't add it to an agenda item. I don't believe that we can take any action, um, but that council members can, um, sign on to the letter. Is that right, city clerk or city attorney?
You can sign on as mayor, yes.
And then other council members could individually sign as well if they wanted to join that?
Um, if we have other signatories that would require coming to the council, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to flag that that's coming forward. Um, are there any, uh, for the city manager, um, do you have any requests, um, or comments about agenda development?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I would certainly like an opportunity to visit with staff. Uh, we have some notes about the next few meetings. Some of these long-term items were noted, some are additions, and I'd like to even speak with, uh, the team a little bit about process and how we organize a long-term calendar in terms of, uh, goal-setting and, and those kinds of things. I would appreciate, uh, maybe 60-plus days, 60 to 90. Um, I'd like to participate in that, especially to make sure that we're carving out some opportunities to do the things internally and administratively that need to be done. We're always kind of, uh, balancing time spent on these policy-related goals versus some of those administrative. So if we could push that out a little further, um, but I'll propose to the group that we might even start huddling up on Mondays after council meetings to take exactly this input and put it into something a little more concrete than just the next meeting or two so that as we have this discussion, we have kind of a short-term and maybe a little more longer-term calendar, but that's actually agendized by date instead of just having kind of, you know, numbered items. Um, there's quite a lot here. So the other thing we might wanna talk about is the process by which we even prioritize putting these things on the agenda, frankly, because if each individual just puts something on, that's okay, um, but it doesn't give us a lot of clarity on what's more urgent. So anyway, lots to consider. Let us as a team huddle up and, and see what we can do with all of that to not only address some of these needs, but maybe clarify this kind of process going forward.
Thank you. That would be really helpful. I would support having a clear formal process to do that. So thank you. Um, are there any final comments by city manager or city council before we adjourn? Seeing none. Thank you for all bearing with us tonight. Um, we will go ahead and adjourn. The rec, next regular city council meeting will be held on May 22nd. Nope, that's not correct. I think it's April 22nd at 5:30 PM. Thank you all and have a good night.
Night.